Good evening. Welcome to the May 17th, 2021 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I think I almost said 2001, which would have been a long time ago. I will call this meeting to order, and tonight we have two fifth graders from Skyline Elementary School, Kayden Brandis and Dallas Tyler, who are here to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, please stand with us. Thank you, Kayden and Dallas. They're here tonight because we also have a proclamation, and they're joined by their principal, Natalie Flutie, who is here because we've got a proclamation tonight honoring Skyline's 50th anniversary. So I'm going to read this proclamation, so everyone will hear about a little bit about the history of Skyline Elementary. Whereas, Skyline Elementary School turned 50 years old in 2020, and whereas the Stillwater Board of Education decided a new elementary school would be needed by 1970, it was decided that this new school was going to be a novel concept in Stillwater schools. And whereas it was planned and designed in both structure and programming for individualized student instruction and dedicated to the idea of providing for and encouraging individual differences in children, and to provide each child attending Skyline the opportunity to succeed. And whereas, at the time of construction, Skyline was equipped with modern conveniences such as air conditioning, carpet, and acoustic tiles. And whereas, Skyline staff was organized into three horizontal teams to further the idea of team teaching as an integral part of the organizational pattern of Skyline. And whereas, 200 students were originally planned to attend Skyline, and today's student population numbers approximately 500. And whereas, today, Skyline Elementary continues to provide for and encourage individual differences in children by incorporating new ideas like enrichment clusters, an outdoor classroom, and growth of faculty. And whereas, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this monumental 50th anniversary was unable to be celebrated last year. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, on behalf of the City Council and the cities, the citizens of the City of Stillwater, hereby declare May 18th, 2021, as Skyline Elementary's 50th and 51st Elementary Day in the City Principal Flutie, would you like to say a couple of words, or you're good? I'm going to come join you guys for your assembly tomorrow morning, correct?
Yeah, we're really excited. Um, so we've been celebrating it last year, but things got away, and it's great to see um, we have an opportunity to come by tomorrow. There'll also be like, um, Facebook live streaming from teachers from long ago that will be happening throughout the day, so you are welcome to come join us if you'd like to come and see.
Thank you. I'll take a picture. I actually have chocolate just for the kids.
Oh, man.
I'll bring you one tomorrow.
Adults never get any chocolate.
I'll let you have that, though.[210.26][210.26](laughter)
I'll take that.
We'll stand and fix this first. Can you guys sit in front?
You want me? No, up here.
Yeah.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Are we good?
That'll work.
Let's get that out of the way. Oh, there's your mama. The mama behind the window. Sorry, Kayden.
Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item four on our docket, which is consent, the consent docket. We have some minutes and a couple of easements on consent. Counselors, are there questions, comments, or a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote.[273.27][273.27](laughter) Yay. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. We haven't used the electronic voting in a while, for those of you who haven't been watching for the last year and a half. Public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing, we don't have anybody signed up for that. I am gonna have, pull an audible here real quick, if you guys don't mind, and jump to seven E, no. Hold on. What is I going to jump to? Where's our COVID discussion?
Seven F.
Seven F, which is actually not on my copy of the agenda. Seven F, we're going to jump down to seven F real quick, if that's okay, Mr. Norman. Um, I put, I had, I asked for this to be on the agenda tonight, just to discuss kind of where we are in the status of our COVID response. As you all know, on Friday, I rescinded the emergency order that had been in place since March 15th of 2020, March 16th of 2020, something like that, a long, long time ago. And that was in response to the much improved local numbers and also to the FDA's change in, and the FDA, I keep saying the FDA, the CDC's change in its recommendations for masking and social distance for, um, thank you, for vaccinated individuals. And the way our ordinance was worded, it relied on CDC guidance around its fast face mask guidance, and leaving it in place would have kept us, would have put us out of alignment with the CDC. And, and I don't like ta, I didn't like taking the step of rescinding the ordinance in order to cancel the mask, or rescinding the, the proclamation in order to cancel the mask ordinance, because that was an ordinance that we all voted on. But I felt it was in the best interest of our community to make sure that we were aligned with CDC guidance as of Friday. But I did want to put that on the agenda tonight for us to comment or discuss, if any of you all have comments about that, or about the status we're in right now. We made it back down to green in the state's COVID risk map, and I am, a few of us here tonight are not wearing our masks because we are fully vaccinated, and according to CDC guidance, we're safe to do that. And so hopefully, this is a step forward in our community's response and recovery from the COVID pandemic. Uh, I would just say that COVID guide, or CDC guidelines do recommend that folks who have not been vaccinated continue to wear their masks. That includes kids who maybe haven't been able to get their vaccines yet. I know my children are still not vaccinated, although I've got two over 12 who will be getting that soon. And so that's kind of where we are. Hopefully, this continues, and we're able as a community to keep community spread from increasing, but that does depend a lot on how many people here get vaccinated. And I would encourage those of you who have not yet to speak to your doctor if you have concerns, and to go get that vaccine as soon as you can. It's available in lots of different places around town. You don't have to wait for several weeks like you did a couple of months ago, so I would encourage folks to please consider that if you haven't yet. And then I'll open it up. Counselors, other comments, questions, or thoughts on the issue?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts on the issue. Not thoughts, it's so nice and lovely to see everybody's smiling faces and to be gathered again in this way. It's encouraging to know that people are going out and getting their vaccinations. You'll notice that I'm wearing my mask. I'm also fully vaccinated, like hopefully most of you in here, but I have half of my family, my two children that are not yet fully vaccinated, and I have one member in my family who's medically fragile. And after talking with our doctors, they've suggested that we just stay the course until he's fully vaccinated. So I hope maybe my mask can be an encouragement to those people in the community that need to stay the course for a little while longer. It can feel awkward now to be the one that's wearing the mask. Don't let that be the case. Be gracious and kind. Hopefully, the rest of us will all extend that grace this transition period. I've, I've been thinking about it since this all started, that, you know, there was going to be a time where it felt a little weird and strange after the initial weird and strange as we were moving back to some sort of normal, and I think that's kind of where we're at. But hopefully, we've persevered for this long. Hopefully, as a community, we'll continue to persevere and extend that grace, and just a little while longer. I can't wait to, to join the ranks of our happy smiley faces.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I would, I would also add, just as I was out this past weekend, I know there are businesses in Stillwater that still have signs that encourage people to wear a mask while they're inside, and I just think, I think it's really important to be respectful of those businesses, and, and if they are encouraging people to wear a mask, to follow suit.
Very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. That is up to individual businesses, churches, the schools are continuing to require masks for kids in school. That is their ability and their right to do so, and, and we would certainly encourage folks to respect those businesses or other entities that, that ask you to continue wearing a mask.
You may notice that I also am wearing a mask. I too am fully vaccinated, and as the lone medical doctor up here, I would say that your physicians sound like smart people.
Yeah.
I would tend to agree. I'm wearing a mask tonight because Counselor Jalowski and I had a personal discussion earlier today regarding her concerns about her family. We've got about a month left, I think.
Just a little bit longer.
Right? And so out of respect for her and her concerns, I said I would be happily, happy to wear a mask tonight to protect you and your family. Because let us not forget that masks serve primarily as source control and not as personal I've thought a while about what I was going to say up here today, but I just want to make it very clear that this is not a political statement. This is a public health mitigation effort, and nothing more, nothing less. There's been a lot of talk on social media over the last weekend about some of the thinking behind these recommendations and, and why things are working the way they are. As somebody that, that keeps my ear pretty close to the ground on the most recent medical guidelines, I can tell you that this is, this is simply a public health measure. And my, my mask tonight is nothing more than that. Not a political statement, not a statement in any other way, shape, or form, so. So again, it, it's one of those things that as we transition over to a time of, hopefully some normalcy for us, be respectful of those that, that are wearing a mask, because there may be multiple reasons that that could be. And certainly, nobody knows on the surface of what those reasons may be. So that's why I'm wearing a mask tonight.
Thanks.
I am fully vaccinated as a medical doctor, so.[731.12][731.12](laughter)
I will just add, before we move on, how much we appreciate the support and the coordination of public schools, Meridian Technology Center, Oklahoma State University, the Payne County Health Department, our emergency staff here, and really just the community of Stillwater over the last, gosh, close to a year that we've had just this mask ordinance in place, and more than a year that we've been dealing with these issues. It's, it's been, I think, a time of where we were able to strengthen those inter-community relationships. And in a year of lots of negatives, it's great to find some of those positives, and building those relationships even stronger than they were is a good thing, so. Anything further? All right. We will jump back up to seven A on the agenda. Thank you for indulging my rabbit trail there. Seven A is the Prairie Arts Center Annual Report, and Megan Brosel is here with that.
Okay, thank you guys for having us. We do this every year. Last year, we were getting ready to start in June, opening back up, so we're kind of stepping off right where we left off. So just as Mayor Joyce just said, it's been an interesting year, and I feel like we've come out really positive, so. This is Jen Johnson, who is our, our education coordinator, and she is going to be doing this presentation with me, because she was a big part of why we were so successful this year. So I will let Jen take it off first.
Okay, so the first thing that I'm going to talk about is some of the strategies that we employed while dealing with this very unique year. The first of which was to fully embrace virtual learning, and we did that in a live synchronous Zoom classroom, and we did it immediately. We were in the middle of an art academy session when the lockdown happened, and we just made my office at home a, a teaching space and kind of jumped right in. We've definitely gotten a little bit better at it, more sophisticated as the years gone by, but we hosted six weeks of summer camp this way, virtually, so that was, this has been a successful strategy for us. We have also sort of reimagined our website as a location and a resource for the community, especially during a time when people couldn't necessarily come to our brick and mortar space. We created some resources, one of which we'll see in a little bit more detail here in a minute, but one of them is the Parent Teacher Resources page, which is some in detail lesson plans for homeschooling parents and teachers to make use of. And these are all lesson plans that we've already made use of and have been successful in the classroom. And then kind of our final strategy was to think about how we could bring what we do at the Prairie Arts Center out into the community, again, because people weren't coming to us as much, in the beginning especially. One of those ways was a program called Porch Portraits. I actually took your, your photograph there. And Megan's going to talk a little bit about that later, so I won't go into that, but another one of the ways that we did that was we provided free community art kits for people to pick up at the center, and we're also doing that in partnership with the OSU Museum of Art and Our Daily Bread once a month, and we continue to do that. And they're just, you know, ready-to-go art kits that have everything that somebody would need to, to make, make an object. Okay. So this is an example of, again, our website is a resource, this is what we're calling the Creative Classroom, and we, this houses over 75 art prompts and stop-motion animation videos of art activities. This was one of my kitchen table projects. And here we've got an example for you. Indulge us, please.
They're very quick.
Yeah. As you can see, it doesn't, you know, everything's kind of explained in this, in the slow motion. And when you go to our website and look these up, which you still can do, then there's a little bit of a description for you as well.
And all the supplies.
Yeah, and all the supplies. Okay.
Okay. And I get to, I get to do the fun facts, because I love some interesting facts, but despite all the Zoom meetings and having to wear masks, we have still managed to have a lot of fun this year. This picture you see of us is the three staff people who work daily at the Arts Center, and this was our porch portrait at, on our porch at the Prairie Arts Center. So moving right along to our porch portraits. And we did 44 porch portraits, and if you aren't familiar with that process, it's, we came to people's houses. Jen and Missy drove all over town and took pictures. We took pictures of several of you, and it was our way, because we could be socially distanced, it was our way of still connecting with our community. And after, when, once we had all those pictures, we would send them back to people, and they would have a picture of their family during this time that they might not have gotten to get. So I actually saw people use them as Christmas cards, so. And then also, we were fortunate enough to, we made a display of them that you can still see at the Prairie Arts Center, and that display was requested at the Modella Gallery for their Faces of COVID exhibit. So it was on display for about a month there too as well, so. So, some more fun facts. We did 80 Zoom classes. We hosted 80 classes over Zoom this year. This included six weeks of summer camp, five sessions of art academy, monthly Maya Promise classes, and holiday workshops. And I will like to give credit to Jen, she really managed a lot of those, so. And we, this year we did, this year we had, hosted four pop-up art shops. They were all outside this year. We had typically been doing them inside. We had a total of 91 artists boobs. We also started single artist pop-up shops during the summer on Saturdays in conjunction with the Stillwater Farmers Market. And I would just like to give a shout out to them, because they have maintained being in our, being in our parking lot the whole time during lockdown and everything, they were, they were still there, and they were wearing masks, and one of them even had a little arm that they handed change back out, mechanical arm, so they were using all their resources that they could to keep continuing on. We did 150 free art kits were distributed. We offer free art kits for pickup at the center during several holidays, including Halloween, Christmas, and Valentine's Day. 200 art makers at our free community art events. Each month, beginning in October of last year, we have hosted a free making event for the community, and we could plan to continue that through the summer as well and just continue on. And we, we decided to just do it on a monthly basis, but we pick and choose different times, so they have, they have gone well with our pop-up shops, and, but we've also had some where we did a pastel painting outside with our beautiful tree that you'll see in a minute. And then one of our, one of the things that we're really proud of is our, our partners. So we did 173 hours with our art partners this year. Art Partners is a one-on-one lesson that you can participate in, so we do anything from drawing to pottery to screen printing to photography to multiple different opportunities for people. So as, if you didn't feel comfortable coming to a class that we were still offering, you could offer, we could offer somebody an art partner as well. And that has been very successful. And you're going to talk about some of the programs.
So we also, despite the craziness of the year, we did develop some new programming and some new and valuable partnerships, and so I'm just going to go through those kind of quickly. We worked with the Oklahoma State Department of Health. We participated, participated in their annual youth conference, which was of course virtual this year. We started a mindful movement class at the center, which is a yoga center that's offered twice monthly on Saturdays. Kat, over at the OSU Museum of Art, and I started working with Stillwater public school teachers, doing continuing education workshops, again, virtual, which has been a really great and, and fun program that we're going to continue to develop. Parent Teacher Resources page, I already talked about a little bit. We also started working with Payne County Youth Services. I'm currently teaching a class at their emergency shelter once a month, and that's been, that's been really nice. And then we also started training instructors for, to be jewelry teachers, because we're really working on getting our jewelry studio up and running, and we need to have some teachers, so we've been, that's been kind of a fun for us too. And then finally, Prairie Arts Institute is our new high school summer program, which we're very excited about, because we haven't really had a lot of programming yet for high schoolers, so this is sort of our way of starting that up.
And during this course, we also took some time, so we have started our five-year planning process, and so that we have lots to look forward to looking ahead. I'm going to let Jen talk about the high school programming in just a minute, but one of the things we're really looking forward to is doing some art adventures. Jen and I have both been able to participate in the Oklahoma Arts Council's Leadership Arts, and it's fun when you get, well, she got to do it virtually, but, and when you get to go around to different cities and see what type of art opportunities they're offering their community, so we plan to bring our members on these adventures with us and sort of go out to other locations, which doesn't just provide an opportunity for us to explore, but it also lets people know what's going on in Stillwater too as well through the Prairie Arts Center. And then our big plan is printmaking and jewelry open studio times. We plan to, just like we have our pottery studio that has open studio time and a monitor there for people to participate, we plan to do that too for printmaking, and we have just started setting up our print studio, which we're very excited. Previously, it had like a smaller space in another studio, and so now it's going to have a designated space. And, and then as Jen has taught, Chris Ramsey was very gracious and has been helping us teach some, some student, some future instructors, and so we hope to have monitors in the jewelry studio too as well, and get that started, just like we've done our open studio for pottery as well. And then I'll let Jen talk about high school.
And the last looking ahead is we are going to start a project-based program for area high schoolers, which I'm really excited about, and I'm going to be leading, and it's going to be a kind of a cumulative project of deciding on a theme for an exhibition, and then putting a call out to artists for that exhibition, and then curating that exhibition over the course of the nine-month academic school year. And another thing I'm really excited about in this program is we're going to use it as an opportunity for kids to meet and with area art professionals. Other than just professional artists, there's a lot of ways to be in the arts world other than to be an artist, and I didn't really know that when I was that age, so it's, you know, gallery owners, curators, teachers, administrators, and so the kids will also be exposed to that as they move forward and, and choose their career path.
So lots to look forward to as we move ahead. Here we have a couple of our quotes from some of our members. You know, our members are really important to us. Yes, they pay a fee to be a member, and they get a discount on their classes, but they are the people who we see time and time again coming into the center and using it with their families and their friends, and having social gatherings there when we're allowed to, and so we reach out to them and really listen to their feedback, and that's where we learn a lot of what, what we can do and how we can better the Prairie Arts Center. And so we just wanted to include some of our statements from some of our members as well in this. And then we have a cute, I won't play the whole thing, but we have a really great video from one of our virtual art students. And so just as Jen was talking about how our website has become another brick and mortar for us, this student is actually in Maryland, he's seven years old, and so we, through our virtual program, we have actually had several students that have not been from Still, from multiple states, not from Stillwater. So I'll just let you, he's just so sweet that we just had to share him. I don't know if you can hear him. Maybe you can't hear. Oh, never mind.
Wait. There he is.
I don't know if they can hear that.
Can you guys hear it?
Yeah.
She, she knows her way to do art, so if you have any questions, you can just ask her. And it's just, the art projects are really good. They're good from your mind, and they're not really about something, not just a project. I mean, sometimes they're about something, they're not just a project, like they're about, in some classes, she's going to talk about, um, the A zones, which like are like square zones, but you know, cube zones. Um, yeah, she's good.
So anyway. Oh, sorry. Anyway, we just get a big kick out of Xander, and he's just been so much fun, and he was disappointed to learn that he was not coming to summer camp this summer, so.
His parents claim they're going to come, come over here, and from Maryland. We'll see.
We'll see. We'll see what happens. But we do plan to, in the fall, continue our, have a virtual art academy, because we have also heard from our members that it was very beneficial to them to have just the option of not coming up to the center. So, so that's something that we plan to continue to do as well. So we want to give a big thank you to the City of Stillwater. There are several people here who communicate, Barbara, Patty, a lot of them that communicate, and John, who can continue to communicate with us all the time when we're, I have a question, what about this? Do we want to do this? And they have just been such a great resource, so thank you so much, and thank you guys, to all of you who have supported us through this journey. We have typically offered OSU memberships for free to the staff, just like they do for the wellness center or something, and we would like to offer free memberships to the City of Stillwater employees, and also to their families, they will get a discount membership too as well, so. Thank you guys so much, and do you have any questions?
Thank you guys so much. Counselors, questions?
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done. I know through my work with Maya's Promise, we've really valued your input and support of inclusive programs, and during a year where a lot of our families that have kids with special needs were even more sheltered than other families, it was really important to us that you guys were willing to chip in and, and make that happen still for our families. I think, I know our family throughout this last year really turned to art quite often, whether it was sidewalk murals or, you know, something on the back patio. I think it's such a value that you bring to our community, and I'm very grateful for the work that you do.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, I, I can't imagine a better partnership. For anyone who ever questioned whether or not this was a good idea, all the things that you put on during a year when people could not come to you, but you came to them, just proves that this partnership was certainly well done, so well done. So well done.
Yes, and thank you to Dr. Burden for putting that together, for giving us the opportunity.
It is the, the effort you are all going to, to go out to the community and to have that outreach. I think that's so important to take art out to the community, and so just compliments to you all on all your efforts for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Are you going to field trip to Oklahoma City? I saw they just got a recognition for public art out in their community, so seems like that would be a good field trip.
Well, and we are also working with the Roxy Weber on a mural project, so we hope that that mural project will continue on to some other mural projects that can happen on the backside of the post office, maybe, or something along those lines. And if those opportunities ever come up, I hope that you guys know, you can reach out to us. We will totally help you find the right person if, if we can put it into our programming or whatever. But yeah, it would be really great to see some of that starting to move up to the city of Stillwater, too. Yeah, so, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item seven B, which is approve authorizations for the city manager to sign contracts related to benefits administration for fiscal year 2021-22.
Good evening. Kristy Driscoll, Human Resources Director. City staff meets with Gallagher Benefit Services, who is our broker annually to review current plan design, options offered, current and alternative vendors, legal compliance, customer service, and of course fiscal responsibility. Our broker reviews all options related to our medical network, medical and prescription third-party administration, life insurance, dental insurance, and our reinsurance policy for high-dollar claims related to our medical plan. Following this year's review and broker recommendation, we are proposing to renew with all current vendors. Based on actuary data and proposed claims dollars, our overall funding shows to remain flat, even with the numbers shown in this report. Overall funding refers to our projected claims experience and potential exposure and cost, costs associated with the contracts referenced in this report. Amounts are allocated in the proposed budget. Staff is requesting council to authorize the city manager to sign contracts related to benefits administration as outlined in this report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kristy. Councillors?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the item, councillors? Do we have that on here for a motion? We do.
Motion to authorize the city manager to sign contracts related to benefits administration as outlined in this report for fiscal year 21-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Item seven C, approve a bid award to Contech in the amount of four point seven million and change for the apron reconstruction project. Mr. Pregel.
Good evening. Paul Pregel, Airport Director. And tonight I bring to you a bid recommendation for a ward concerning our center apron, and I'm going to bring up a overview. It's also in your packet. It's the blue section. On May fifth, we opened bids. We had three bidders submit proposals for the construction of the center apron, and this is the last of our multi-year apron reconstruction project. Contact was the lowest bidder at four million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, and this is for approximately thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one square yards of concrete, again, on that blue section that's highlighted on the screen and in your packets. In your packet, you'll find a letter prepared by LBR, our Engineer of Record, which is the official bid recommendation and tabulation. I would like to remind council that this project will be a hundred percent reimbursable this year because of the Carissa Act, C-R-S-S-A Act. So I'm happy to answer any questions before I provide a recommendation.
Councillors?
Paul, is this a company that we've used previously at the airport?
Actually, yes. Actually, Contact is currently on site with the North Apron, and they are performing at a satisfactory level.
Okay. I was going to say, it's a lot of concrete. We want to make sure they're doing a good job.
A lot of concrete.
Yes, yes.
So when this one is done and poured, will be done with the apron project?
Yes. Thank goodness. Three years.
Seems like we've been talking about it for longer than that.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation, Paul?
Our staff recommendation would be motion to award bid number sixteen dash twenty slash twenty-one for the construction of the center apron to the lowest bidder, Contact, in the amount of four million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for the base bid.
Thank you, Paul. Councillors?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that bid award is approved. Item seven D, approve a bid award to Thrive Landscape and Irrigation for a project, for the Block Thirty-four Sodden Irrigation Project. John McClany.
Evening, Mayor and Council. John McClany, Special Projects. As you're probably aware, earthwork is underway at Block Thirty-four, and while the earthwork was underway, we solicited bids for sodden irrigation. We received four bids. The low bidder did not provide all the information needed to evaluate the bid, so the lowest responsive bidder was Thrive Irrigation and Landscape of Stillwater, and we recommend a motion to award the bid for Block Thirty-four Sodden Irrigation to Thrive Landscape and Irrigation of Stillwater in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, John. Councillors?
It's really nice to be able to give that to a local company, isn't it?
I, my one question was around the completion date. One of them was forty-five days, one of them was into July, and then Thrive is a week?
Yeah, they seem to be pretty confident.
They're ready to go.
They can get it done quick. And, and honestly, the faster we get it done, the better off we'll be.
No, I'm, I'm all for it. Be a week. I just, that seemed quick. I mean, we're, we feel fairly confident that that's close?
Based on what I know about the project, if he really gets out there and gets after it, yeah, I feel confident. Now, obviously, the rain is going to slow things down, but...
That's good for sod, though, right?
If we had, if, yeah, it is. Once, once it's on the ground, it's not so good while you're trying to do it. But if, if they had a, a good week of, of clear weather, I don't see any reason we couldn't get this done.
When do we anticipate it being ready for them to come in and finish?
It's, it's ready now for them to get started, so just a matter of getting the, the contracts together and letting the weather cooperate, and then hopefully towards the end of summer, it should be ready for a little bit of light activity.
And then it'll be time for Mary Mason.
It'll definitely be ready by then.
Yeah. I'm just excited because this block has been, a lot of talk around the community as far as what it could or couldn't be, and this is kind of the first step in providing an opportunity for people to gather safely and gather in a, a place that looks like it's put together somewhat. So I, I'm appreciative of that, so, thanks.
Thank you, John. Councillors, is there a motion on this item?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second to accept the staffer, accept the staff recommendation to award the bid, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that bid is awarded to Thrive Landscape and Irrigation. Item seven E, approve adoption of a 2021 to 2025 strategic plan. Becky and Brady.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. In February, Brady and I presented to council the proposed update strategic plan for 2021, 2025, and tonight we're bringing it back to you for possible adoption. We made a few changes based on the discussion following our presentation, but it is largely, largely unchanged since last time we spoke about it to you all. In your packet, you can find the full strategic plan, complete with all the priorities, objectives, strategies, and key performance indicators. But just a reminder, with the adoption of this updated strategic plan, the mission for the city of Stillwater will become to build a vibrant community for every resident through our efficient services, shared spaces, and smart planning. And the vision, Stillwater will be a dynamic, inclusive community with a spirit of innovation, growth, and opportunity. The standards of excellence speak to our values and expectations of city staff across our organization, and they did not change in this updated strategic plan. And those are connected, performance-driven, proud, respectful, responsive, and trustworthy. Our priorities cover the six areas that are considered to be of highest priority. For each priority, there are three objectives, which are the specific concrete outcomes that are related to each priority, and then within each objective, there are three strategies, which are examples of how we plan to approach each objective. And those priorities are effective services and accountable government, motivated management, safe community, connected spaces, unique culture, and engaged and invested residents. And now Brady's going to talk to you about our key performance indicators.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillor. My name is Brady Moore, Chief Performance Innovation Officer, and as Becky mentioned, back in February, we highlighted the newest addition to our strategic plan, which was key performance indicators, or commonly known as KPIs. Key performance indicators are measurable values that demonstrate how effectively an organization is achieving key objectives and strategies. Benefits of using KPIs in an organization like the city of Stillwater include increased focus, greater accountability, reduced waste, better decisions, and of course, better performance. With the launch of this new strategic plan, we now have a live KPI dashboard linked to our city's website. This KPI dashboard is a way to display our organization's commitment to continuous improvement. As we continue to grow this dashboard with future data, we'll be able to graphically show history and trends. And as a, as a rollout for this new strategic plan for our organization, we designed a much-needed refresh to the current desktop background on citywide computers. This new design showcases the newly crafted mission and vision statements, along with our known standards of excellence. This new desktop background will be pushed out to all city computers as soon as it is approved by council this evening. Becky and I have enjoyed working on this project together to update the city of Stillwater strategic plan for 2021 through 2025, and we'd love to hear any feedback or questions that you have.
Thank you both. Councillors?
I know many people don't like strategic planning. I will be one of them that will admit that, but I think what I have been proud about this council and working with the city staff is that I think we all have buy-in into these, they're not so complicated, they're not so pie in the sky that they're not, you know, impossible to reach, yet I think they're going to challenge us to look at the way that we do things, and I think that's, if, if you have to have a goal of strategic planning, that's part of it, so that's, thank you for that.
I agree. I've, being new to this organization, one of the things I noticed early on, I like, whether it's Bill or any of our engineers, when they're doing their presentations here, quoting that, that priority on their report, because it just gives perspective to you all and to the citizens, you know, why we are spending the money we spend and why we're trying to achieve the things we're trying to achieve.
And as someone who's also new to the organization, I, looking back, it seems that the strategic plan gets updated on an annual basis, and I think that's so important because I think the strategic plan should be that evolving document as, as things occur, as things continue to happen, that we continue to tweak the plan. And of course, being the data geek that I am, love the KPIs and, and following the trends in the data to make decisions.
That's exactly right. And I, we mentioned it last, in February, but as you all come with new objectives or the citizens or our staff come with new goals and objectives, we, we can put new KPIs out there for, in different, and new strategies to meet those objectives. So I agree with you.
Yeah, I was going to, along those lines, I know this, these KPIs were developed at least partially with a citizen KPI committee that now seems like forever ago, and I have no perspective on time anymore. If that was like a year ago, two years ago, that we had the KPI committee? I would love to see us sort of reconstitute that as a, like a, whether it's annual or at least a couple, every couple of years, to kind of help continue to make sure that we're getting citizen input on which KPIs we're using and we're seeing those trends.
I agree.
Because this is, this is the best part of, of the, the upgrade, for sure, and being able to see that stuff over time, it's, it's really going to make decision-making a little bit clearer and easier for us.
Yep, and I agree. And, and when we, I mentioned this in February, but as we started building this KPI data and deciding which KPIs we want, we went back to all that information, so don't think that that stuff was lost before COVID. And I think you all even met at Carston Creek to do one of those sessions. I was reading through some of the minutes from that meeting. So, yeah, Becky and I were both diving, diving through all that data and making sure it was used in this plan.
Good deal.
Yep.
Well, the KPIs, having those available to us certainly will be helpful, but also having them available to the public, hopefully will open that, open that floor for discussion and where we need to be, where we've been and where we're headed, so. I, I think that, that availability to the public is one of the biggest things for me that's, that's exciting about this whole deal. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, but that, to me, is the, is the kind of take-home, is that it's completely transparent.
Yes, yeah. The dashboard is linked a couple of different places on our website, and we continue, we want to continue to refresh that with new data. And, I mean, it's a great way to showcase the great work that the city of Stillwater is doing, but it's not just, like, there's, there's data on there that we know we need to improve on. So it is something that we want to see, there's numbers there we want to hit and achieve as a, as an organization.
I think that forward-facing component of the dashboard is really exciting, I think, for folks to get a glimpse of, of all of that. I also really appreciate the work that you did to kind of trim this down, really crystallize it to things that are important and valuable to us. It really helps, I think, us focus from a strategic perspective. I think it's, can be really easy when you're writing a strategic plan to just kind of pull the one from the year before and, and not really take that harder look to, to think about what's meaningful and intentional, and I, I can see that you all did that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep. Staff recommends, if you're ready for that?
Please.
All right. Staff recommends that you vote to adopt the new strategic plan for 2021 to 2025 for the city of Stillwater.
Thank you again. Councillors?
Moved to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the staff recommendation on the strategic plan. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the new strategic plan is adopted. All right, that takes us to, we're skipping seven F because we already did that, we'll go down to eight A. Resolution 2021 dash fifteen, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year 2021 dash 22. Kristy Cluck. This, I assume, is why most of you are in the room tonight. Just in case we have questions, right?
That's right. Kristy Cluck, Finance Director, and I don't have a prepared presentation today, but I just want to affirm that the budget that is included with the resolution is unchanged from that budget that was presented for public hearing on May third. So I am here to answer any questions you might have, or if I can't, I brought my support.
Can we ask them just all to stand up and recite the budget items?
Let's do it.
All jokes aside, this is the culmination of a whole lot of work by a whole lot of people every year that, that, to get us to this point in budget adoption, and I know everyone in the room and lots of people who are in the room have worked very hard to put this budget together, your team especially, and we don't, I don't want to let it go by without acknowledging that...
I appreciate that.
There's a lot of, many, many hours of work that go into preparing a budget like this, and you guys have a, a long track record of doing it very well, so thank you for, for all of that.
Thank you.
Councillors, any further questions about the budget?
Motion to adopt resolution two zero two one dash fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution adopting the 2021-22 budget. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, resolution 2021 dash fifteen is adopted. Seems very anticlimactic over, after all that work. But that's the goal, right? To get to this point and have it feel anticlimactic? All right.
The unfortunate part is, is it starts all over, right?
Yeah, yeah. Take a, take a couple of days, and we'll get to the next one. All right. Item nine A is ordinance thirty-four seventy-three, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at five oh five East Eighteenth Avenue from IL Light Industrial to RSS PUD Small Lot Single Family Residential District, planned unit development. This is the item for the Habitat for Humanity Pocket Neighborhood. Is there a motion on the ordinance, councillors?
Motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-four seventy-three.
Second.
This being first reading.
Adopt, yeah. Oh, let me, let me read, let me reword that. Yeah. Motion to advance ordinance number thirty-four seventy-three to second reading.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to advance ordinance thirty-four seventy-three to second read. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman. Mr. McNichol.
Actually, I have two tonight, if you'll bear with me.
Please.
First, as of Friday, May fourteenth, city of Stillwater's mask ordinance has come to an end. Local conditions have improved, and CDC's recommendations for fully vaccinated individuals have relaxed quite a bit. We would still encourage people to, as Councillor Jaloski said, give grace to those who continue to be masked, and we would recommend that others that have not been vaccinated to follow the CDC's recommendation. the CDC's recommendations. Everyone ages 12 and up can receive the vaccine for free. If you're able to get vaccinated, please do so. It's one of the most important things you can do to help protect yourself and the entire community as we continue to recover from the effects of COVID-19. If you have need for finding a vaccination site, visit vaccinefinder.org or just about any drugstore in the City of Stillwater.
Yep, they've all got it.
And if you will allow me, sir, I'm gonna step down to the podium for just a minute.
Please do.
So, I'm gonna invite Paula Dennison up here while I give, just because I've been given strict instructions on this, brief comments. Paula is leaving us as of Wednesday, is her last day. She's going to the big city of Gretna, I have a really hard time with that, Nebraska, suburb of Omaha, and she will be closer to her daughter, like, two hours, which I think is another factor in her decision. Her 17 years of service have been very appreciated. She started in Development Services as the manager there, and was appointed Assistant City Manager over that and several other departments some years ago. And as a token of our esteem, I have a small token and wish you good luck in the future and in your future endeavors. And don't, don't forget about those two letters.
Yeah, well, don't worry about that.
Well, thank you, everybody. My service here has just been that, it's been from the heart and for all of the things that, not me, but we, have been able to accomplish throughout this community. I was asked just today, what was my greatest thing that I could think of? And I couldn't name one. I could name a thousand and one, or 10,001 things that we have all been able to accomplish, those who were sitting before you and those who will be sitting after you, and everybody in the audience wouldn't have been able to do any of this without everybody pulling together for the betterment of this community. So, the memories of 17 years will go with me and my family, and we are just so grateful for our time here in Stillwater. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I don't think Norman mentioned specifically, but you're gonna be the city manager of Gretna, Nebraska, correct? So, that's fantastic, you're getting a, a good one, and hopefully, your experience here will, you'll take, and, and we'll hear great things about Gretna in the future. Thank you for all of your service. All right, city councillors, Vice Mayor.
Yes. This is a friendly reminder to always look for signs indicating the time limit before parking in a spot. We want to make sure we have parking available for all of our guests who are visiting areas like downtown Stillwater, Campus Corner, and the Strip on Washington Street. If you do get a ticket while shopping or dining in these areas, go back into the business you visited and ask to have the ticket validated. Validated tickets must be received by the Court Clerk's Office within 48 hours, or you'll receive a notice for an unpaid parking ticket. Thank you for supporting our local businesses. And this is a little, it's very appropriate that it came to me, because I live downtown, and I do park when I am not at work, in the long-term parking, so that the business that I live over has an opportunity to have people park in front of them, and it's not that, it's not that far to walk, so, put that little plug in.
Very true. Thank you. Councillor Hawkins?
On Friday, members of the City Council and the Stillwater Regional Airport Advisory Board were invited out to the airport for an update on some of the airport's completed, ongoing, and future projects. Airport Director Paul Preagle and every single member of the Stillwater Regional Airport Team continued to do a fantastic job ensuring that our airport is always improving and moving forward. Thank you for having us, we look forward to what the future holds.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wedling?
Yes, sir. City Hall will be closed for Memorial Day on Monday, May 31st. However, many city services remain available online. Information is available at the city's website, stillwater.org. Trash and recycling are collected as usual on all holidays, but not yard waste. Make sure to set your carts out by 6:00 AM because collection routes can vary, and the Convenience Collection Center is also closed for city-observed holidays. I'm gonna go a little off-script here as well, if I may, sir. To piggyback on something that, that City Manager McNichol said, getting vaccinated is one of the most important things. I would argue that getting vaccinated is the single most important thing that you can do going forward. I know I've harped on this, I wouldn't be doing my degree in service if I didn't take this opportunity to say this thing, say these things, and that is regardless of previous COVID status. I've heard a lot of people say that I don't need to get vaccinated because I've had COVID already. The jury is still out if that immunity is lifelong or not. It appears that it is not, actually, is what the data is showing us now. So, regardless of your previous COVID status, please, please go get vaccinated. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Councillor Jaloski?
Yes. Summer is almost here, and a lot of residents are ready to jump into those outdoor summertime activities. The splash pads at both Boomer Lake and Southern Woods are anticipated to open for the 2021 season on Friday, May 28th. The hours of operation for those splash pads are from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day of the week. The municipal pool located at Couch Park is also set to open. It will open on Monday, May 31st at 1:00 PM.
Excellent. It's good to hear. Those splash pads have been fantastic, they're almost always full when they're open.
Yes.
I would like to let everyone know about the Downtown Stillwater Association teaming up with active citizens to spend a morning cleaning up our beautiful downtown. The Downtown Garbage Gather will be held on Saturday, May 29th. Volunteers will meet at 8:00 AM in Chris Salmon Plaza, located at 9th and Main, for route assignments and equipment. For more details about the event, visit the Downtown Stillwater, Oklahoma Facebook Event Page. All right. That takes us to item 11, which is appointments. We have two spots on the library board where the terms of Robin Cornwell and Kathy Albright have come to an end. There are a limit of two, two terms on the library board, and so we thank both Robin and Kathy for their long-term service on that board. We do have two open applications from Catherine Ross and Donna Sinis to be appointed to the library board, so I will make that nomination, the nomination of both of those individuals to the library board.
Second.
With a nomination and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Catherine Ross and Donna Sinis are appointed to the library board. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. That takes us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the city council meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for May 17th, 2021. First up, we have the Consent Docket, and special meeting minutes from May 3rd. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Item 5A on the agenda was a report from Grand River Dam Authority, but I think they were not able to be here.
Be rescheduled, yes, sir.
We will reschedule that item, and we will jump down to item 5B, which is to approve a sole-source purchase agreement from S&amp;C Automated Transfer Switches from Oberlander and Associates. And Lauren Smith is here, or is Lauren Smith here?
Yes. Yes.
There he is.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all right. I wasn't sure we still had you online. This is, I think, the last time you get to do that.
Yes, it is. I'll be visiting you on the 7th with a very lengthy agenda.
Oh, boy.
[laughing]
Lots of approvals. Good evening, trustees, I'm Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. In January, the trustees approved the City Hall Transfer Switch Project. The project is designed to increase electric service reliability to City Hall. One of the major components of the project is to install an automatic transfer switch that will supply redundant electric service from two separate services, sources. The automated transfer switch is solely used by the utility or manufactured by the S&amp;C Electric Company. We currently have three of these switches installed on our system. One is at the Stillwater Medical Center, and two are at the wastewater treatment plant. Since 2001, we have been standardizing our equipment to increase reliability. Examples of standardization benefits include operational knowledge of the complex controls, warehousing of spare parts, and servicing of the switches all by one manufacturer rather than multiple manufacturers, and having to warehouse multiple components to these switches from different vendors. So, that's really the main reason that, that we use S&amp;C. Oberlander and Associates is, is the exclusive representative of S&amp;C Electric Company in Stillwater and the surrounding area for this product. For this, staff is requesting sole-source purchase approval. I have a recommended motion, but I will pause here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees, any questions? I'm, I'm just wondering, Lauren, what the cost difference is between this switch and a competitive switch?
That, I'm sure they're comparable, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, further questions? Lauren, what's your recommendation?
Motion to approve the sole-source purchase of the S&amp;C Automated Transfer Switches from Oberlander and Associates for $59,308.50. Authorized expenditures up to $65,240. This is, includes a 10% contingency, and authorize staff to enter into a purchase agreement for the switch.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, approve the staff's recommendation on the sole-source, sole-source purchase agreement. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Lauren. Item 6A is Resolution SUA 2021-7, which is a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Let's just, no, just kidding. Councillors or trustees, is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution SUA 2021-7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, resolution is adopted. Any reports from the officers or the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for May 17th, 2021. First up, we have approval of the Consent Docket, meeting minutes from April 19th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Item 5A is Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Economic Development Report from Mr. Justin Mingus, who is joining us online as well.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to the Hampton Inn in Acworth, Georgia. That's where I'm calling in from today. So, I'm thankful that we got one more chance to do Zoom. Wish we had the opportunity in the future, but hopefully, 23rd and Lincoln or somebody will figure out how we can do that.
Call your state representative.
Heck, come to our Legislative Breakfast on Friday, we'll have Representatives Tally and Rans and Burns and Senator Doug are there, so you can pepper them with your, your wants and needs for next session.
That's a good idea.
Or the 30-something, I think, J-Cabs that had no language earlier today. So, the theme of, of my report today is activity is up, but new challenges, I think, are in front of us. So, RFPs, the Request for Proposal Activity was up, we received 25 for the quarter, so we're getting back to kind of pre-pandemic numbers of roughly 10 per month. We responded to eight of those. The problem is, is we are down from what pre-pandemic we would respond to 50 to 60% of those RFPs, and we're definitely below 50% right now. And it's because of one of those new challenges. Due to construction costs, material costs, labor, and then folks just trying to get speed to market, they've, they've held these projects for so long, greenfield sites are no longer in fashion or in vogue right now. It's all existing space that they can rehab and get operational quickly. And since we don't have large, I mean, the, the good thing is, we don't have a bunch of large, empty buildings around town. The bad part is, we can't respond to some of these projects that are really cool that I would like to have in our community. Sometimes they'll let us do greenfield as an option as a backup, but they don't get to those until they've eliminated all existing space in the region. We have 16 active projects currently, out of those that have responded, you know, this quarter, most of those are this quarter, and then a few that are held over from previous quarters that are, are still active. A few of those have had site visits with us. We were able to start doing BRE, so Business Retention and Expansion, visits in person, kind of the tail end of this quarter report, but April and May, we've been getting back to what a pre-pandemic number of about one per week of a BRE visit, and that is Joshua Hawkins' Sole Focus. And as a reminder, those are visits or meetings that we're having with either the owner of a company, the general manager, director of operations, or sometimes it's the HR, head HR official, and we'll ask questions around sales, their industry in general, is it consolidating or expanding, and then labor issues. Are you hiring, firing, struggling to find talent? Which is kind of that second challenge that is in front of us, that everyone is facing from waitstaff to welders. It is a, it is a struggle for our local employers to find talent, qualified workers to come on. As I've mentioned, I'm here in Georgia doing some training, and they're, they're experiencing it here as well. So, it's not an isolated Stillwater-only or Oklahoma-only, it is a nationwide issue that folks like us, other EDCs, Meridian, and politicians are gonna have to help try to solve. I did notice that the governor, I think, was gonna try a new incentive. It was a $1,200 incentive for folks who are currently on the unemployment system. If you get a new job, and I think it's maybe a six-week bogey, if you hit that, then you're eligible for a $1,200 incentive. So, I hope folks respond to that, and that helps get folks that maybe were otherwise on the sidelines back into the system. Now, there are other folks that are on the sidelines for other reasons, and so, you know, we still have to address, I think, the systemic issues that we've had even before the pandemic, so hopefully, we haven't, you know, we, and I say we, it's kind of the collective we, and our politicians aren't taking their eye off of that. As far as site visits go, we had two site visits in the quarter, and they were both primary jobs, so manufacturing R&amp;D visits. And then our assists were way up, 62 assists for the quarter, where we've been averaging, you know, the last previous 12, 18 months, you know, somewhere around, you know, 20 to 30 a quarter. And so, a lot of activity, folks calling us, looking for real estate, looking for help connecting with workforce, or expansion incentives, I mean, the, the requests are all across the board, so it's really exciting to see that number go up. We continue to attend networking events. Hopefully, the last virtual event we attended was this past quarter. Stillwater and More, the Economic Development Professional at More, we were the host or the emcees of a trivia night for about 50 site selectors and real estate professionals from the DFW area. Because I got to ask a Stillwater question, I got to give away Stillwater swag, so the winners on our questions got some Mid-South gear, so hats, t-shirts, things like that, and then $100 worth of tickets or gift card or gift certificate to the McKnight Center. I reminded them it's a 45-minute flight gate to gate, and $100 will get them a ticket to just about any good show. And hopefully, they were watching the recent announcement last week, we've got some quality shows coming up that I'm super excited about. And I'm not a country fan, but I, I would like to go see Tim McGraw in that really small space. So, hopefully, Mark Blakeman's got a few extra seats laying around for me. I'm sure he's got a lot of new friends lately asking him for tickets. And then, on the entrepreneurship side, we're, we're in the beginning phases of planning for Crazy Days. We had a lot of requests coming out of the pandemic to bring back the Crazy Days of old. So, three of you councillors that grew up here remember the baby races and turtle races downtown, costumes, all of the things, so we're trying to step back in that direction, but not overcommit. And so, we're working with Downtown Stillwater Association to plan a special event for each night of Crazy Days. So, a Thursday night event, a Friday night event, and a Saturday So a Thursday night event, a Friday night event, and a Saturday event. Thursday, Counselor Jaloski would appreciate, I was trying to go to our version of Dinner en Blanc, but sans the white and all of that. We're hoping to get out onto Block 34, but we know that the grass might not be ready for, you know, 50 to 100 people to come out. But we're still going to try to host some sort of a community picnic on Thursday night. Block 34 Community Center somewhere in that space, so to be determined. And then hopefully, maybe we can go to more of the Dinner en Blanc, where we're white and bring our chairs.
We have, Justin and I have talked a couple of times about this kind of guerrilla picnic idea that we could bring everybody out and do a white dinner, all wearing white, so.
Just don't mess up the grass.
Yeah.
I got super jealous watching all of the Dinner en Blanc videos. If you see, it's across the country. It was really cool parties. And then Friday night, we're going to work with Modello to bring back the art and wine walk, or art crawl around downtown, so partner with six to 12 retailers, bring our bars and liquor store partners to downtown, and curate a really cool art and wine walk through downtown Friday night. And then Saturday, our friends at Downtown Stillwater Association, this is, they're charged with this one, hopefully throw a block party concert on 7th, close down at least a portion, you know, to the alley, maybe alley to the husband, if not all the way to Main Street. Sally and Chris are going to work on entertainment and stage and bringing maybe additional vendors. Counselor Zanotti, it'll be a call for you here in a little bit, probably this coming week when I get back into town, about how Mary Main Street could probably do kind of a plug or a promo during that time to get folks thinking about Christmas and what that would mean for our community. And then, just kind of finally, as I, as I close up, like a lot of institutions, organizations, companies, the chamber is doing our part to bring our team and events back safely. And so June 1 will be, kind of, we're planting our flag for our march back to whatever normal is. So most of our crew is vaccinated, so we'll be following CDC guidelines there, but we'll be opening the front doors again to our office. We'll be allowing our committees to meet in our facility. We had our first in-person event on Friday with our business at lunch at Zanotti, or sorry, it's not, at Meditations, where we had 30 or 40 folks there spaced out, not, you know, eight, 10 tops. Packaged lunch served by meditation. So we're on our way back to bringing folks together, which I think is our main charge as an organization, is to provide those opportunities for our community leaders to get together and hopefully share ideas. So with that, I will pause.
Thank you, Justin. Trustees, any questions?
Justin, what's the, as you're visiting with folks, what's the, what's the general temperature of businesses? Are they feeling like they've already started their rebound? Are they just starting their rebound? Do they, what do they need as we're moving and transitioning out of the pandemic response, kind of more into a recovery phase?
Yeah, most of the folks, especially, you know, restaurant and retail are saying they're hitting or beating 2019 numbers. When you think of year-over-year, they've kind of deleted 2020 from their top equation, and they're basing their year-over-year same-store sales, same-store sales goals from 2019, and most of them are beating 2019. The issue that they're having is workforce. Our friends at Eskimo Joe's had to throw a recruitment party, I think, a couple weeks ago for all of theirs, right? The one place that, when I was in school, you know, it was like, you had to have a friend or no someone to go get a job at, you know, is having to struggle to recruit. You know, our little restaurant there on Campus Corner, we've gone through so many applications, and people will accept the job and take another job two days later. And so there's so many openings right now that people will apply, will accept your position, and then no-call, no-show you two days later when they get the thing that they were wanting. And so I don't know how to solve that, other than it's going to be very painful as we all get back in. It kind of met at a weird point, too, where a lot of the students left our community, while a lot of us are trying to ramp up our employment. No internships last summer means a lot of folks I know that have left to go get the internship this summer, or they might have otherwise stayed in town to work. And so it's, it's going to be a bumpy road. I would say, I've been trying to say this, that every time I speak in front of a group, if you're going out to eat dinner, show a little grace to that restaurant or waitstaff. They're working with very limited crew right now. Their supply chain is completely destroyed. A lot of folks can't get spoons, cups, any other input into the, you know, what they make. And so our restaurant entrepreneurs right now are fighting it with kind of that, at least two hands behind their back, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. But workforce and labor is the main issue right now.
So you're saying the city council all needs a third job?
You don't get paid for that one enough, so you might as well get a real one.
Support our council habit.
What else? Well, Justin, we appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and kind of as we get into this recovery and hopefully figure out ways to get more people employed and get people into those roles, we can get these, these businesses rolling. But it's good to hear that, that we're overshooting 2019 numbers at this point. I heard the same thing from Kristi Morrison this morning on the radio, that hotel numbers are looking better than they were even before the pandemic. So that's a, that's a good thing, but yeah, it's going to take, it's going to be some growing pains, I think, as we move from almost nothing happening to now everybody wanting to go do these things right away. So we appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing over the past year to help us through a very challenging time.
Been our pleasure. It's been fun.
Thanks, Justin.
It's your point. I'm excited to have fun conversations with folks about increasing sales and not what grant you want you to keep your payroll on.
Absolutely. Have safe travels.
Thanks, guys. We'll see you all.
Bye-bye. Okay. I turned the page. Hold on a second. Item 6A is a resolution, CETA-2021-1, a resolution adopting, or excuse me, a resolution of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Is there a motion, trustees?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CETA-2021. Wait, am I looking at the right one? Is it dash one? Did you say dash one again? Dash one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CETA-2021-1. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the resolution is adopted. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn CETA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the annual meeting of the Stillwater Public Works Authority for May 17th, 2021. This is our additional authority that only meets very occasionally to adopt a budget and, in fact, approve on the consent docket. Item 2A is approved special meeting minutes from May 18th of 2020. Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item 5A is Resolution Number SPWA-2021-1, a resolution of the Stillwater Public Works Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept Resolution Number SPWA-2021-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SPWA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Public Works Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening. Thank you all for being here.